Good morning, I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing for application number 18625000096PLNG, which is a request by Julianne Richardson submitted on behalf of the property owner, the Joanne Gale Profit Trust for a 2.5 foot variance to the required 7.5 foot side yard setback identified in the Arch Cape Rural Community Residential Zone Development Standards, which is contained in Clatsop County's Land and Development Code Section 4.0640 Subsection 4, to allow for the expansion of an existing single family dwelling as close as five feet from the north and south property lines. The standards for a variance are contained in Section 2.8010 Sub3. The property that is the subject of the request is located at 80417 Carnahan Road, Arch Cape, Oregon 97102, and is known as Assessor's Map Township for North Range 10 West, Section 19 B.C., Tax Lot Number 2502. My name is Rebecca Dorman and I'm the hearings officer presiding over this hearing. I will make a decision which approves, approves with conditions, or denies the application. I will consider the evidence in the record as applied to the relevant approval criteria as identified just now and in the public notice for this hearing, and which is also discussed in the staff report provided by Clatsop County staff. The hearings officer's decision is appealable to the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. Before we get started, I'm going to talk about the procedure we'll be following today and make some required statements for the record. The hearing will follow, will be conducted in the following order. First, we'll hear a presentation from staff, followed by a presentation by the applicant. Then we'll open up to public testimony with those who are here in favor of the application, those who are neutral, those who may be opposed. Then I'm going to ask staff to respond to the testimony that we've heard at that point, and then applicant will also have a chance to respond to that testimony and provide a final argument. Then if we're ready, we'll close the public hearing. If you would like to provide testimony, when it's your time to do so, please state your name and your mailing address for the record so that you can receive a copy of the decision. If you do, if you would like to provide testimony, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria for this application. If you believe a criterion applies that was not listed or covered in the staff report, please explain why and then go and then proceed. Failure to raise an issue now may preclude raising that issue later in a subsequent appeal to the Board of Commissioners and then from there, if it goes to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Also, failure to raise a constitutional or other issue related to a proposed condition of approval, which I don't think we have any identified yet, again, without raising that issue with enough detail to allow others to respond, may preclude an action for damages on that issue in Circuit Court. And if anyone feels that they don't have enough time today to provide testimony, if the request to keep the record open is made, I would grant that and allow additional testimony or evidence to be submitted during an open record period and in writing. So as I mentioned earlier, I serve as the county's hearing officer. My role is to be a mutual decision maker. I provide this service to the county through a contract, not an employee of the county, and I'm obligated to remain unbiased. For the, for the record, I have no financial interest in the application, nor do any of my family members or businesses in which I or one of my family members are associated. I do not own any property in Clatsop County. I have no direct private interest in the application. I have not conducted a site visit and I have no ex parte contacts to disclose for the record. In preparation for today's hearing, I have reviewed the staff report and some materials that are already in the record. While I'm drafting my decision, I will thoroughly review all submittals in the record and consider the testimony and evidence provided today at this hearing. And for the record, I am capable of issuing a fair, objective and impartial decision. But before we move forward, does anyone wish to challenge either my ability to hear this matter or to challenge the county's jurisdiction over this matter?
Nope.
Okay, hearing, no objections. Thank you. We can now begin with the staff report, please.
Thank you, and I'm going to attempt to share my screen here. Just to give us a little location to watch. All right. Does that look all right?
Yeah, yeah, it looks great.
Thank you. All right. Good morning. I'm David Cook, Senior Planner with Clatsop County Community Development. And I'd first like to start with a bit of property history before coming to the subject variance request for our property located in the Arch Cape Rural Community Residential Zone here on Carnahan Road. When the existing dwelling on the subject property was first permitted back in 2003, the property was zoned Rural Service Area Single Family Residential. This was one of the zones the county applied to residential areas which had access to a sewer system. Later in 2003, the county adopted ordinance 0310, which created our rural community zones such as the Arch Cape Rural Community Residential Zone. When the property was permitted, the required side yard setback was five feet from the property line. With the adoption of ordinance 0310, side yard setback requirement was increased to 10 feet from the property line. The existing dwelling became a non-conforming structure by the adoption of that ordinance. Just prior to receiving this variance request, the County Board of Commissioners adopted ordinance 2414, which changed many development standards across zones in the county. With the adoption of this ordinance, the Arch Cape Rural Community Residential Zone had its required side yard setback reduced from 10 feet to seven and a half feet from the property line. This change was not communicated by staff to the applicant while they prepared their application, and so their application materials referenced the 10-foot requirement rather than the seven and a half foot requirement, excuse me. Staff received the variance request on behalf of property owner Joanne Profit on February 20th, 2025. Prior to the application, the Community Development Director required the applicant to host an applicant neighborhood meeting. The applicant neighborhood meeting is intended to give neighbors advance notice of an incoming land use application and allow them the opportunity to provide early feedback on the proposal. The applicants hosted this meeting at the nearby Arch Cape Fire Hall on February 10th. While the applicant and county staff were in attendance, no members of the public joined. The subject property is developed with an existing approximately 3,578 square foot dwelling. Portions of this dwelling are as close as five feet to their north and south property lines as the setback requirement at the time the structure was permitted was five feet. The applicant is requesting a variance to the required seven and a half foot side yard setback to allow for an expansion to this existing dwelling as close as five feet to their north and south property lines. The first story of the dwelling is proposed to have an expansion of close to 900 square feet, as shown in this figure located on page two of the staff report. In this box in red, I've attempted to delineate the location of this proposed expansion, which is, which would not meet the required seven and a half foot setback to the north property line. So this is the area which would require a variance in order for the county to approve it. On page, I'm sorry, on the same page here, we have their second story addition of approximately 2,350 square feet. And again, I've noted the areas which would require a variance in order for county staff to permit them in this red box. Notice of this application was mailed to surrounding property owners. A sign was posted on the property identifying the request and this hearing, and notice of the application and this hearing was published in the Daily Astorian. No public comments have been received on this application. Based on the findings of fact as presented in the staff report dated April 18th, 2025, staff is recommending denial of this variance request. And I wanted to note just one small typo on the very bottom of page two of the staff report. We've included a sentence that says Clatsop County Community Development for a five-foot reduction. It should say a two and a half foot reduction on that line there, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I have one question for you about notices. I thought I saw something in the code and I'm going to forget the citation right now, but requiring notice to go to a fire district? Is that maybe for variances, for variances, is that the required, an extra requirement for public notice?
Yeah, for, for really any, any application that is publicly noticed, we will send notice to the relevant fire protection district. And then any like utility districts that happen to, to provide services to the property. And I can just verify that we did in fact send something to the fire district. Pull out my public notice here. And we did to Mr. Mark Recman, the chief of the Cannon Beach Fire Protection District, was emailed a copy of the public notice.
And no, no response, comments from our district. Okay.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you for your staff report and for your presentation. And now we can move to applicant or applicant's representative.
I'm Jack Scoville. Do you want my address?
Um, yes, please.
P.O. Box 306, Needtards, Oregon 97143.
And Mr. Scoville, could you also explain your role as a representative today?
Yes, my company Scoville Design Group, Julianne Richardson, I hire as a subcontractor. We are developing Joanne Profit's addition remodel and we're, we are, you know, needing the variance to continue with her design.
Okay, thank you. Then you are welcome to proceed.
Well, thank you for being here. Let, let me talk. So one thing I was wondering, and I, and I know there's paperwork that was sent out, but there, there's no, in this meeting right now, there's no rebuttal on why the community development has declined the variance or, or, I shouldn't say declined it, but as that it's not necessary or it's not within their best interest. I'm not sure.
Yeah, so at this, at this public hearing, if, if you're here representing the applicant, you do have the opportunity to explain why you believe the proposal, the application meets the criteria for granting a variance. As you, as you mentioned, the community development staff's recommendation to the hearings official was to deny the application for a variance because the application, in their view, does not satisfy the applicable criteria.
Okay, so it's because it's non-conforming, they see that, of course, doesn't. So it's not an issue of, it's just a code issue. It's not a beyond code issue.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we can, at this hearing, the governing criteria, so the, the code is, is what we're bound to apply.
Okay, no, I just want to get that clear. Thank you. So, um, well, yes, I represent Joanne Profit and, you know, my, my job is to make her happy and meet her needs and wants. And so to give her the, how she wants with the look she wants, you know, we want it to look, you know, beautiful. And to be able to match her style, match the ridge lines, so it doesn't look like an addition, so it doesn't look like there was, you know, code change in the past, it, you know, since it was built the first, in the first time. We are asking for this 2.5 foot variance so that we continue the structure toward, in a beautiful, congruent building. You know, one thing that wasn't mentioned, I'm sure it's in the document, you know, we meet all the other criteria, lock coverage and height restriction and all the things that a new building would be able to do. So we're not asking for any other issues on this property except for the 2.5 north and south extension of our addition. And yeah, that would make her happy. So that, that is, my goal is to meet her needs and wants. Do you have any, any questions for me?
Um, no, I don't think so. I, I think that if that's all that you have for now, thank you very much for your, for being here and for giving your presentation on behalf of the property owner. I see Ms. Richardson's also here. Did she want to add anything to the, to this portion of the, of the hearing as representative of the property owner, property owner slash applicant?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Perfect. Yeah, I guess my only thought is, you know, that hasn't already been discussed here is because the property currently, you know, extends as David covered due to the previous, the previous zoning side yard setbacks that were in place. If we weren't granted this variance, how does that? I guess I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand like how exactly that would work since parts of her building already extend. Like, can she not do any addition at all or remodel at all without applying for, you know, through like a non-conforming avenue, or how would that work for her?
Well, maybe I'll ask staff to discuss the, the limitations on non-conforming uses. And, and in this case, I, I, I think the only non-conforming aspect of the property is the setback. But I'll let staff confirm that. Did you have anything else, Ms. Richardson, before we move forward? And again, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Cook to come back and address your question.
I, I don't have anything to add yet that we haven't already included there and that David went over. So I think I'm all set as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Hey, so having heard from Mr. Scoville and Ms. Richardson, I'll ask if there's anyone here joining us who would like to provide testimony either in support of neutral or in opposition to the application? I only see, I only see one other person who might be a member of the public, Jim, on the call. Jim, did you, if you wanted to unmute yourself, if you wanted to provide any testimony?
I did not understand. Let's see, I'm hitting several unmutes there.
We can hear you.
All right, great.
Will you state your name for us, please?
Uh, my name's William James Baldwin, B-A-L-D-W-I-N. I go by Jim. I'm here with Joanne.
Okay, great. And did you want to provide a mailing address?
Just leave it as a heightened Joanne's address, the heightened address. It's already been listed.
Okay, great. And then if you would like to provide some testimony, now is your opportunity.
I would like a further explanation by the community development to Julianne's question of them. It didn't seem like there was a response there. Is the existing house fine? And is the addition fine? If you don't allow it? Or? And the setback we're requesting is two and a half feet? Or five feet? Is it going to be two and a half feet or five feet? In other words, you, you listed the 24-point, 24-14 as a seven and a half? And then the 0310, 10 feet? Now, is it seven and a half? Or 10 feet? So could you answer that part? Community development, could you answer that part?
Yeah, I will let them respond to those questions. Is there anything else that you would like to state for the record?
As, as Jack said, the existing was five feet and the, the, the look of the house would continue the conformity of, of the look if it was permitted. And, and that's why we're going after that is because it, the look would be, continue to be beautiful with that and it wouldn't look like an addition. So Jack's comments are seconded by Joanne, you know, they've discussed it and it really would be appreciated if that was approved. So anyway, yeah, go ahead and comment on that other.
Thank you for your public testimony and now I'll ask staff to please respond to the testimony we've heard.
Thank you, Ms. Dorman. Yeah, I'll, I'll start with a little bit of the, the setback history and the ordinances that, that created those. So coming back to when the home was originally permitted, there was a, a five-foot required side yard setback, so no structure closer than five feet to their north or south property lines. With the adoption of ordinance 0310, the zone change altered the required side yard setback from five feet to 10 feet from the north and south property line, so a more restrictive setback. Then in 2024, ordinance 2414 reduced the setback requirements in this zone from 10 feet to seven and a half feet away from the north and south property lines. So the, the requested variance to build a structure as close as five feet to the north or south property line is an effective request of, of two and a half feet, if that makes sense. So we're, the request is to build as close as five feet to the property line, which is a request to, a variance request to reduce the setback by two and a half feet. I probably said that three different ways. Sorry about that.
Well, that last one's good. That's, that's perfect.
Great.
Thank you for that explanation.
Thank you, yeah. Talking about the, the structure as it exists, so that there are portions of the structure which exist closer than seven and a half feet from their north and south property lines of the subject property. And, you know, we consider that structure to be non-conforming. It's, it's non-conforming to the side yard setback requirement in this case. And structures which are non-conforming can continue to remain non-conforming so long as somebody's still using the structure. So somebody still lives in the house or the house is used for some purpose, the, the setback issue that's, that's there, that can continue and there's, there's, that's totally fine. But when you are proposing the expansion of a non-conforming structure, any portion of that expansion needs to conform to our current requirements, in which case this is the seven and a half foot side yard setback requirement. So if the, if the request, or I'm sorry, if the expansion was, was remodeled or redesigned in such a way that it were no closer than seven and a half feet from the north and south property lines, a variance would not be required in order to process that. It would be a, a type one permit process, a fairly straightforward permitting process from, from a land use perspective in order to get that permitted. And I think that just about covers the response to testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. I was just going to ask you for my, my own curiosity. In December 2024, when ordinance 2414 was adopted, were there any specific findings that were part of that ordinance, which, which I know is not the subject of this public hearing, but I'm just curious to, to discuss why, why the change from 10 feet to 7.5 feet was needed or considered appropriate by the board?
I know that the reduction in setback requirements was, was adopted in order to facilitate more housing or more options for housing, but in terms of the exact number from 10 to seven and a half, I, I don't know. But our, our director, Gail Henrickson, who actually handled that ordinance, may have some insight.
Hi, for the record, my name's Gail Henrickson. I'm the Community Development Director for Clatsop County. And David's correct, we did not provide specific findings for each of the setback reductions that we adopted in ordinance 2419, I believe it was. Yeah, so there are no findings.
Okay. Well, then I, I don't have any other questions. I'm going to ask applicant's representative, Mr. Scoville, if you would like to provide any final comments. As the applicant, I will say you do have the, you do have an opportunity to provide a final written argument seven days after. If we close the record today, you would have seven days to submit a final, or the applicant's representative, whoever you would designate for that, to, to submit a final written argument. So no new evidence, no new testimony, just kind of like a final rebuttal to what we've discussed at this hearing. You can also waive that seven-day final written argument opportunities up to the, I would say, the property owner or the applicant in this case.
Yes, I would look to Joanne to see if she would like to proceed with some rebuttal, seven day or not. Is, is Jim still on?
It looks like Jim is still on and unmuted if, if Joanne heard that.
They were addressing, uh, Jack's going to leave it up to you. If you would like to do a rebuttal after the meeting today, extend it or just do the, take the decision today and act upon that.
Yeah, I don't see that they would change anything. They made their decision.
Well, she's going to make a decision today.
Well, all, after today's hearing, I will take some time to review the record on my own, everything that's been submitted and issue a written decision.
Okay.
I don't see the big problem because nobody sees that part of the house. It's way back hidden.
That's true. It's at the back. You've probably heard Joanne. But it's at the back of the house. It's not out front. But it's at the back of the house. It's not out front. It's not gonna hurt anything aesthetically from the street.
Right, yeah.
And the person next door is building and. So she's already built all the way back. The uh additional dwelling. I think she's building a garage back there, a big garage and shop. And uh, she hasn't voiced any problem with it. She's seen all the notices. It's Val and Shannon. They've seen all the notices and. I guess they're not on the meeting here, so. And we saw them two weeks ago and they never mentioned anything about it. Not a problem. They saw the sign out front. And again, it's the back part of the property, just like Joanne said. Okay. Anything else, Joanne?
It doesn't affect any other houses because nobody can build behind it.
That's true.
It's true. It's a highway. It's up high.
Very good points. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Um, well, then with that, I think that we are ready to close. It sounds like we're ready to close the record. And it sounds like applicant has um decided to waive the seven day. Um, seven days to submit final written argument. So I'll take what you've said today at this hearing as your, as your final rebuttal. And now I will um take this matter under advisement and review the record. Um, for a few days and issue a written decision. Um, which, as I mentioned earlier, would be appealable to the board of uh the, the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners. And I will work to have that decision issued to staff to then distribute to um the parties here. Um. I'll say within about seven days from today's hearing. So I'll try to get that out next Friday to staff. And um unless there's any procedural questions at this point, um, I'm gonna go ahead and. Close this public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.